This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, let's get going. First thing we guys do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, statements, changes to the agenda that was presented? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie, so we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck has an aye, so the agenda is approved 5-0. First thing on the agenda, Chris, I think you're gonna kinda give us an update and then also talk about our resolution approving contract change.
Okay, I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. After all those technical difficulties, I wanna make sure I'm heard. Okay, well, um, I'll give you first the update of kinda where things are at. I see that Ken must have some pictures from the last project update that went out. We've been including some kinda cool pictures, which each week's update, so people can kinda see what's going on. We were fortunate that about last Monday, they did finish the 58-inch storm sewer casing, and that's the photo you can see there in that image. It was quite the battle for the contractor late, prior week. They found a lot of buried wood under the railroad. If anybody knows what a corduroy road is, basically back in the 1800s when they built the railroad across there, it was basically a swamp and they must have set it on railroad ties and, and logs to build basically a corduroy road or corduroy rail system across the swamp, the swamp or whatever at that time. So they, they did hit a lot of wood late the previous week and did, did get that finished. They had, that finished the sanitary sewer, the water and the storm sewer casings. They still had two casings to do for electric. They were six-inch lines that were supposed to be put in on either side of the north and south side of the roadway. There was some concerns after what they had dealt with on the storm sewer that they were gonna have problems on the south side with any kinda casing, so we pretty much abandoned that idea to put a casing in on the south side for electric. Decided to try to see if the north side was gonna be feasible, and by the time they were ready to get prepped to, to start that, it was pretty evident there was gonna be a bunch of wood in the way of that as well, so. Contractor came up with a creative idea to, as an alternative, we needed to find ways, some way to get the electric conduit across to their side of the tracks. And what they came up with was to utilize the excess space in the storm casing. So again, that storm casing that you can see in that image, there was enough room after the storm pipe will be in to feed four conduits for electric wire and fiber optic. Wasn't the ideal situation, but it was, at that point was the, really the only alternative to try to get electric conduit to the other side with a lot, without a lot of problems and without a lot of extra expense. So in the end, the two steel casings for electric on the north and south sides of the road were, have been abandoned, or basically are not proposed to be done. So in the beginning tomorrow, they're looking, they're proposing to install the storm pipe and those electric conduits in that storm casing starting tomorrow. The other work that's been happening out there, if you've see on the rest of these photos, or if you've gone online and looking at the online camera, they started the sanitary sewer and the water last week and basically got most, all of that in, the main line in on that first block to the east from Third Avenue up to Second Avenue. And then we're back today installing water services to Strike Forest Bowl and the vacant lot between them and Joe's, and so they'll be doing sewer and water services this week. And then they'll be shifting over to the other side and starting the sanitary sewer and water main on the, on the west side as well. They'll also be starting a storm sewer shortly after that, getting it starting from the creek and working their way back to the railroad. So stuff is happening. Obviously now you can finally see stuff happening when they start laying pipe. They're also gonna be trying to get in and get the concrete work done over the railroad, and that's basically so they can get their watchman released. The railroad requires a flagger and a watchman while they're doing that work in, in any of the railroad right of way, so they gotta, they wanna get that work completed so they can get them off there and out of there, and there's no utility work underneath the railroad because obviously that was all done by under subsurface crossings, so. Any questions, I guess, at this point?
Yeah, Chris, since we're not laying those two electrical conduits, is that going to save the project money?
It's gonna save the project money. It was, most of that was actually being funded 80/20 through that, that federal grant, so it'll save the city that, that 20% share. There will be a claim for some costs associated with them prepping and preparing and, you know, they had to acquire the materials that'll have to get restocked, so the contractor is in the process of submitting a request for some of the costs they, they've encountered to date to prepare for that, but yeah, overall, there'll be a savings.
Thank you.
Chris, I have a question.
Go ahead, Sean.
Alright, so in our packet here, the change order, it looks like SM Henshaw sent it on 7:15. We got sign off by MINDOT and the state aid engineer on 7:15. Glenn was a month later and you, there's nothing by the date here. Do we have a sense of urgency on this thing, or, you know? Can someone just explain why it's going so slow? That's my number one question I get from people on the street is, you know, why is this thing, first it was delayed two months, we've had great weather, we missed out on all this opportunity, and now, you know, it seems like there's this big gap and maybe they weren't ready to work on it, I don't know, I just want an explanation why they can sign off on the date of.
Yeah, so the work, the work that's on the change order is, is actually work that was already completed. It was actually completed back in June and formally approved verbally of work that had to take place. There was an urgency at that time, it had to be done, but we have to do the change order as, as a kind of a formality for documentation and how it's to be paid for. So that was work that took place down in Memorial Park, and if you recall, that work took place back in June. In terms of how slow are things going, I mean, I hope just the obviously there was, there was nearly a month delay from the railroad, and then the work that had to take place down at the railroad, it was just very time consuming, and I know I've been saying since the beginning that it would be slow during that process just 'cause all that had to happen first before anything else could take place. They will be, definitely be completing, you know, working on, you know, you'll see a lot of utility work happening on both sides of the tracks from the, from 21 and then up to Second Avenue. Because of the delay they had with the railroad, they're not certain they're gonna take on that next block from Second Avenue to First Avenue this season. The concern would be is if they get too far into the season and haven't completed concrete work, it could be an issue. They will certainly be able to get a good early start next year, and they've, they've obviously got the most difficult stuff that's gotten out of the way, which, again, is this really the stretch that they're in right now?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions for Chris? If not, I guess, Chris, you need to go over the resolution? What you need?
Yeah, you know, real brief, I can kinda go over it, I kinda summarize that a little bit. So just to kinda recap what that, this change order for is for is, since the beginning of this project, one of the requirements of our, what they call the category CAT X, which was the environmental review, required that we minimize the impact on the park, and that basically this work in the, in the park needed to be completed early and, and gotten out of the way. At that time, too, during all that planning, it was, it was the thought and intent at that time that work was gonna be happening on the east side of the project, and with the other delays, MINDOT approval delays, rebidding and looking at the, or not rebidding, but changing the schedule and looking at that east end as an option, it, it didn't, didn't directly address how to deal with the storm sewer that needed to get installed this season. It always had called for a temporary connection, but it wasn't necessarily a temporary connection that was meant to be over a season, basically from spring till spring. It's some more, more detailed work had to be done, so this was a discussion early on with the contractor, MINDOT, about how to address this, and contractor came up with a solution that seemed very reasonable, but obviously had some costs, cost involved with doing that. And so this was a proposal basically to, to address completing that storm sewer through the park, getting it temporarily connected to the storm sewer in the highway so that that could continue to function, and basically positioning them, positioning the project better for next spring. And it's proposed to split this cost, basically how the project is split up, which is about a 55/45 split between DOT and city, and this was really to, to also free up that property, that land where the memorial, or the Veterans Memorial is gonna be constructed. That was probably one of the main reasons why we needed to also get that pipe out of the way. The old pipe out of the way, the new pipe is on a new alignment which avoids, avoids the Memorial Park or Veterans Memorial area.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding the resolution that we need to address?
This is Bruce, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand administratively how this is working, and I might have asked this question before, but this resolution, are we basically approving the contract adjustment? We're not approving the change order, because the change order has already been approved?
The work, the work has been approved by the the project, the project team, so project manager with MINDOT, the construction engineer, myself, and working with city staff, so work needed to be done and that was approved. This basically is approving how it's paid and allowing us to increase the contract amount.
So, yeah. To what level of authority, just so I understand, what level of authority do we give city staff to approve a change order? What, what is that dollar number?
I don't know that there is necessarily a dollar number, but it would certainly be anything significant would be brought to council before, before that would be approved, but this is an item that was time sensitive and had to be dealt with at that time.
So what you said is that a significant amount, we would approve the change order, we wouldn't deal with it after the fact? City staff wouldn't approve?
Most, most likely unless it was something of dire urgency. And I can think of a few examples in the past where we've had situations like that where the work was identified, the costs were identified, and they were brought back to council before the work was authorized and done. Something like this really had to be, a decision had to be made on, on the fly. It wasn't a large cost, certainly split between the two agencies, so.
I don't have any issue with the decision that was made or how it was done. My question's more administratively. So I know if something's under 10,000 or 20,000, we're not gonna see it till afterwards, and we should expect that maybe city staff is approving increases in the project as it's occurring. And just so we, and note, because this is only the first year, we'll see more of this, there'll be additional change orders. I'm still a little unclear when we are going to approve them and when we're not, but I'll take it for granted that it'll happen when it's significant, whatever that means.
There has been, there has not been, or ever that I'm aware of, a firm fixed dollar amount, Bruce, that gives you that comfort level is that anything over 10,000, anything over 20,000, it's been a judgment call, and in all of the construction projects we've done, at least in the time that I've been here, is we've been very sensitive to taking a look at those that we think are generally fairly simple, innocuous, and aren't a big issue versus those that likely would be and would entail significant discussion or significantly would change the price of the contract, but there is not a black and white number there, and to date, we've had no issues in how that's been handled with past councils. So we're, we're very sensitive to the dollar amount and what's occurring in that change order, because in many cases, sometimes it's not possible to, you know, in this case for $5,800, you know, to try to rush in and get to a council meeting to do this, we're not gonna call a special meeting for a $5,800 change order on a 12 and a half million dollar project. But I, I know you, what you're looking for, but there is not a black and white answer, or hasn't been historically.
But thank you, I appreciate those comments. I'd rather talk about it now than have something in the future where it's $35,000 and then we have a bigger issue and why weren't we talked about, why wasn't it discussed?
We've, we've had
Is there own understanding what significant is? You know, 25,000 is significant to me.
We, we had, we've used, I believe, pretty good judgment in that regard, and the council, at least for those that have been around for eight to 10 years, can tell you that we've not had issues of any major magnitude that has caused any concerns where we have impacted the council's trust in how we've handled this stuff.
No, I appreciate that. I'm not criticizing anything. Maybe auditor in this, in this meeting might appreciate why, just the best practice to have a level, but I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm just asking the question.
And in this one, it's a little different than most of our projects. Most of our city projects haven't been at this magnitude. Back when we built the $30 million wastewater plant and we had change orders, you know, we tried to bring those to the council in a timely fashion as well. When we built the fire station as well, we were very cognizant on any of those kinds of things, trying to make sure that we anticipated likely the council's thoughts or opinions, and we're very careful in the due diligence we used in trying to make sure that we had a contract change done with council's approval before we took on any significant financial exposure.
Thank you. So the resolution is just authorizing Mike and Chuck to sign the contract, not the change order?
No, the, the, the resolution is to increase the contract from $12,499 to add the $5,800 with the new contract at 12,504,800, so it approves the change order and increases the contract amount.
So that change order has already been approved?
Administratively it has, but we have to have the council approve the change order, which results then in a change to the contract.
What would have happened if the council said no? Mike?
I'm sorry?
What would have happened if the council didn't vote, or doesn't vote for it? I mean, I know it's 5,800, but if it, and somewhere along the line, and Chuck, maybe you can remember this, I thought eight, 10 years ago, we capped the amount at 10,000. For, didn't we, didn't the council give the administrative staff like a $10,000 leeway for? Doesn't that ring a bell with you?
I don't recall off the top of my head, Sean.
Okay, but it was early on in our, when we first got on the council, but.
You know, the, the challenge in the discussion here, and you've gotta be somewhat realistic, and Chris can weigh in, you know, but you're gonna have some of these smaller nitpicky items that we don't have any choice on a, on a 12 and a half million dollar contract, and so, you know, when we start getting up there, that $5,800 is one thing, you know, if we're getting up to 20, 25, 30,000, yes, in all likelihood, we will have that done ahead of time and in for your review and approval before we run it through the process. We like to, when we bring it to you, by having this signed off by all of the entities, at least for MINDOT, the engineer, the contractor, you know that when it comes to you now, that it's been signed off on all parties pending final council approval. So we won't pay the contractor for any work, it just says that all of the parties that are involved in this contract are okay with the scope of the change order, the dollar amount, and it's now ready for your final consideration and approval, and if you approve the change order as part of the resolution, we will then change the total contract amount.
Maybe comment, just point out again, the process we're following is because we have to follow Minnesota statutes 429. Since this is a city-led project and there are assessments on the project, even though nothing related to this change order has to do with assessments, we still have to follow procedure. MINDOT does have their own process and procedure they go through to approve this change order. It has to go through their contract amendment office, as well as we signed off by their construction engineer and the state aid engineer, but because this is a city-led project, it is a 429 project, we do have to follow procedure, and that is to, to adopt or formally approve change orders so that it's, it's reflected in the, in the contracts, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions? So there will be more? Oh yeah. I don't think anyone's doubting that. So if there's no other questions, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution for a change order number one and changing the amount of the contract?
So moved.
Rick here, I'll make that motion.
Well, who said first, Sean?
Yeah, it was me.
Yeah, Sean made the motion. Rick, would you like to second it?
Sure.
Okay. I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Rick Seiler, to approve the resolution. If there's no other questions or comments, okay, we'll go for vote. Maggie? Maggie, you're on mute.
Sorry, I said aye.
Okay. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the resolution passes 5-0. All right, thank you, Chris. Next on the agenda, Mike, I assume you're taking this more of a formality for people? I think, what is it, the third or fourth one that I think I've been involved in? This, this will be Ken's.
It's actually, okay. It's actually the third one, Chuck, for the 2010 project that we did jointly with La Sure County. For the council members that were not aware, we had participated with La Sure County in a small cities development program for rehabbing homes. We had to put in to be a part of that program, we had projects in New Prague, but there was also other projects throughout the county, 20 in total, where we loaned $4,000 of some older small cities money that the city had that we had to loan back through that program, otherwise we could have lost the, the funding back to the state, so. In short, we had a 10-year payback on these 20 housing projects. Most of them are actually at the point where we run the course of the 10-year time period on the repayment period, but we actually did have one here where they did not quite hit the 10-year payment, and this is the third time we've gotten a full $4,000 payback. This one happened to be done in Waterville, so they were just a little short of a year of making that 10-years where it would have been completely forgiven, but property selling title companies looking for the satisfaction document that the lien is no longer in effect, and we got the payment, and I would recommend that we approve the satisfaction agreement. They'll record that on their own for their title company that is requiring it, so. It's really all I have for the item. Like you said, more of a formality than, than anything.
Does anyone have any questions?
A quick question can work. Is the money come back to us clean, or is it still tied into small cities grant restrictions?
Oh, I can let Mike answer that.
It's still small cities money.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a, a motion to approve the repayment agreement.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments or questions? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 5-0. Okay, thank you, Ken and Mike. Next, we're considering a modified Dozenki activities. Jim, I see Brooke's online. Jim, you wanna start leading us off, and if you have any questions, I'm sure Brooke can help us out also.
Yes, I asked Brooke to come on the meeting with us just to answer any questions if necessary, but the chamber continued to want to do some sort of activities around Dozenki. My discussion with Brooke was regarding trying to stay away from that weekend. She wanted to entertain doing some food trucks at Memorial Park. Just having a place for families to come, grab some food, pick a spot in the park on a blanket or picnic table, and I think all of that can be done in a manner that will allow for social distancing and maintaining numbers. My only caveat to Brooke was if the numbers would go too wild, we would just have to shut it down then. But she came up with a little plan today that they're probably looking at just two nights of having three, three vendors in the park. Part of the memo was the, just a little picture map that I did, and on that, it just laid out several green areas that would allow for different areas to meet. As you're looking at the map with north being up, we entertained, maybe setting up the band or the music to the south behind the ballroom, where there'd be a large grassy area that individuals could come and individuals and our families come and pick a spot to listen to the music. The blue rectangles on the map would be like the food trucks or booths that I had talked about, just spreading out throughout the park so that lines wouldn't be an issue by them. And again, at the same time, those food trucks, along with working with Brooke, would be in charge of making sure that that line remained social distanced just to keep everybody safe as they move through the lines. But the different green areas that I marked off are just additional areas that people could go to, to to be in the park and still participate in the food and listening to the entertainment. I think, I think there would be limited resources necessary. Brooke's request just indicated to have a couple police officers there. I think the only other necessary activity would be public works to deliver some barricades. I would, I would believe that we should probably barricade the, the park off for those hours so that we don't have any vehicle traffic through there. People can park around the area and make their way to the location. And then we would remove those barricades after the event, so traffic could go once again through the park. Again, I think as the executive orders stand right now, it is an outside entertainment venue is no more venue is no more than 250 people. My discussion with Brooke was if this is lasting from four to nine, people more than likely are not going to come there at four o'clock and stay there till nine o'clock. There is no alcohol, there's just the food booths provided and the space to come and gather if you choose to come to the event. But my discussion with her was, again, we would monitor numbers and make sure that the numbers are maintained at an acceptable level, otherwise it would have to be shut down then. Brooke, you have anything else to add?
Yeah, so just really quick, this, so right now, we only have enough food vendors for a couple of nights, but there is a chance that we still might have a couple more who are thinking about it. So there may be a chance for a third, that's also including entertainment. And then, just really quick, I don't know if you guys seen, but Lonsdale has been doing a similar thing every week for the past month or so, and it's been fine without any issues of crowds. And I just found out today that they do have a beer tent there. So, not that I want alcohol, I still don't want that, but um, yeah, it hasn't been an issue, so if that makes you feel better, just wanted to add that.
And this is the only event that I put into my memo. I know her, her letter of request talked about doing some other virtual things that wouldn't necessarily mean any gathering or anything that don't necessarily need our okay at all. Any questions from the council?
So, Mike, this question is, is, are we, you know, are people going to be allowed to bring coolers into the park?
No, we will advertise that well. I know we've always turned, I don't know, it's always been a sticky subject, but I would say that would just start gathering, people would start gathering if we did that.
And what's authorized under the park ordinance right now with this?
Alcohol is authorized in the parks.
Yes. Oh, it is.
So if the council wants to give that caveat as part of the event, then that would give the chamber some more authority to say, hey, we can't bring anything, and they could put that in, out on their advertising. And then police would be present and just ask not to have any consumption of alcohol in public during the event, if the council saw fit for that.
Yeah, I think if people were permitted to have alcohol there, it could turn into a bigger thing.
Ken, does what you described consistent with the COVID policies and our, that we adopted a few, a month or so ago, and everything you discussed, is it consistent?
Everything to the point. To date, we have not authorized the use of the park for anything, for any groups or anybody wanting to rent a shelter or anything. But up, up to that, Bruce, it is consistent. It would, we would be following executive orders by just maintaining those numbers in compliance with the executive orders. And to be honest, if, if we did it two nights, I do not know how many people are going to show up to these food booths, how many families. And that's, that's the only thing I told Brooke that, hey, I don't have a problem trying it, but obviously if the numbers get out of hand, we can't allow that to happen. And that's where we would step in and, and have to shut it down then.
Is there any?
Pardon?
What's that number when you say gets out of hand?
Well, the, the number is 250 people max in an outside entertainment event right now. And again, I think because of the, the different areas that are involved here and the ebb and flow of people, that as long as we maintain a number around that number, I think we would be fine.
Is there any legal?
When you stay around that number, do you feel that each green area can have 250, or the whole park could have 250?
Well, it's supposed to be for an event, but that's what I talked to Brooke about dividing up that, and not necessarily that there's 250 in each green area, but again, to give us leeway that there would be people spread out, as long as we see that they're social distancing and maintaining their masks when they're not eating, I think that's something that we can control and, and talk about. I know Ken had some, some signs for the parks, we could grab some of those and, and maybe concentrate them a little more for the event there also. That just talks about social distancing, and do they talk about masks also? Ken?
I don't recall if they do, I'd have to look at one again.
But again, I, I would probably not be the proponent of pushing for anything. But in this event, I think the chamber is moving to make it more of just a family event, no alcohol. And again, families can choose whether or not they want to participate. If they come down to the area, they know that these food trucks are available, they're going to have to get in line, get their food, and go and sit down or find someplace to sit and partake in that then. I think, I think we can do this in compliance without causing any issues or concerns.
This is Maggie, is there any legal liability to the city for allowing the use of the park for this event, in the event that there is an outbreak?
Well, one of the things, as I'm just sitting here, as we've listened to it, and it has continually, I think, been refined by the chamber as to what they would like to do, is that normally in the approval by the council of the outline of what's normally contained with the traditional Dozenki festival event that we have, the city is named as an additional insured, and we're provided or named under the chamber's insurance policy for that event, and we would expect this same thing to be done as well, so that coverage would be just the same as it has been in past years. The bigger question might be for Ken is that we don't have any city ordinance allowing or addressing food trucks on public property or in a public park, that obviously, I think, Brooke, you do when they come, when, when the vendors come for Dozenki, you normally make sure that they're licensed either by Scott County or La Sure County. So that would be about the only thing we could do, is that the food vendors are there under contract with the chamber, and as long as we can get proof that they are licensed by either Scott County or La Sure County, then in, in your approval of the event, is we would put the onus on any responsibilities or issues with the food trucks on the chamber because it's their event.
And I would assume in this case, they would all be authorized by La Sure County? That's where the event is.
We would have to at least make sure that that's the case.
Sorry, most food trucks get a Department of Health license, which is valid on both sides of the street.
And that may take care of it.
Yep.
I know La Sure County was doing their own inspecting. Do you require booths that were on La Sure County side, or do they, Brooke, require that they notify the county and let them know they're there then, or?
Um, yeah, usually they will. The food trucks that are on the La Sure County side every year just have La Sure County permit every time, but most of them now get Minnesota Department of Health, so then they're covered.
Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve modified no-jinky activities.
I'll second.
Are you making a motion, Rick?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler. Anyone going to second it? Got a second by Bruce Wolf. My only question now, on your motion, Rick, are we stating that we're not going to allow alcohol in the park?
That is to not allow alcohol.
Okay. And Bruce, you're fine with that as a second?
Yes, that's how it was proposed, I believe, yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mayor, specifically then, we would go back to the site in the ordinance that allows consumption of alcohol in the parks, that for this event on those dates, that that would not be allowed, correct? Is that, is that my understanding of the intent?
Yes. Is that?
That's what I was thinking, yep.
Intent and Bruce's intent, is that we would eliminate that part of the statute allowing alcohol? And so is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Could we, we add a time on that, which the event is from four to nine, let's say from 3:00 PM to 11:00 o'clock, the park closes at 11:00 o'clock. Could, could I ask you to entertain just putting those, those time limits on the no-alcohol-in-the-park for the events of that day from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM?
Are you fine with amending your motion?
Yeah, do we need to amend the motion or make a new motion?
Well, we haven't addressed the motion yet, so I think we can just amend the current motion, current motion if possible, because we have not voted on it yet.
I would accept a change in the, or, you know, an addition to the motion that I already made.
I approve it also.
Okay, stating the fact. And Bruce, you're fine with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is stating that we're allowing the event without alcohol, which means we have to, whatever, not follow the state or the statute for park, and the timeframe will be from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on the days, on the two days of the event. Go ahead, Mike.
Additionally, in there, as we've done in the past, is that staff would work with the chamber to ensure that the insurance issue, naming the city as an additional insured, is provided for the overall event and the oversight associated with the food truck. That obviously each of them will have their own insurance, but we just want to make sure from a health standpoint that they have their licenses and that, and I'm sure Brooke would be looking at that anyway, but just to make sure that the insurance and the food truck health certificates or licenses are in place.
Yeah, I think those are more administrative activities that we definitely have to have, but, so I got a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? If not, Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck is an aye, so it passes 5-0. Good luck, Brooke.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thanks, Brooke.
Okay, next on the agenda is informational only regarding the use of the CARES money and the loan or slash grant that the EDA has come up with to help businesses in the, in the city of New Prague. So Mike, if you want to just kind of give a quick synopsis, I think, Bruce, I don't know if you reviewed it, but I think the changes that were approved at the EDA seem to be in place in this, so I think it's just a go thing, and I think it starts today, right, Mike?
It does. One second, if you don't mind, that, yes, what we included in your packet was the final document that was approved by the EDA this past Wednesday in going through the overall program. The press release, the outline of the program guidelines, and the application connection or link have all been posted to the city's website. And try as I might, on the back page on the press release that I sent out this afternoon, and you should all have gotten a copy, and it was in your packet, is that the application period begins today and ends at noon on Monday, August 31st, not Friday, August 31st, technical slip up by me. So applications will then be evaluated beginning the week of September 1, and then hopefully we'd be able to select loan or grant recipients. Using, if need be, if there's more than the money we have, using the lottery system, they'll be notified by email on or before September 9th, and so everything is ready to go. Barb spent the afternoon getting the website up to date, so you can click on our front page and the homepage, and it'll take you to the EDA department, and everything's ready to go at the, at the top of the, the website. In addition to what I provided you on our program, that last Thursday, Scott County sent out information under, under scale as an announcement, that the Scott County Board of Commissioners have allocated $5.5 million compared to our little over $200,000 to support local small businesses, and included in your packet is their information, where they've got monies for self-employed entrepreneurs, theirs for small businesses, they will have $15,000, we've got $7,500, and then they're also making available up to $25,000 in grants for local for-profit farming operations. You might wonder how they're going to do that, I'm not sure they know at this point, they're looking at doing it, but they're still trying to figure out how they're going to do that. The commissioners wanted to be able to do that, and then last Thursday as well, I talked with representatives from La Sure County, and the county commissioners down there are likewise going to try to create a program, and it appears they will likely use something similar to our program, the former Scott County CDA program, and other county programs, and will likely be using Lee Hall and Next Stage to administer their program as well. So they're kind of coming out of the closet at this point, and so people or businesses will have an opportunity to apply for a number of different programs.
Any questions for Mike on this?
Is there going to be a standard place, we just send everybody you when they got questions, or is there going to be a pamphlet on how many different loan packages that are out there?
In the materials that I sent out and that are posted on the website, if people have questions about the city's program, then I will be the contact, and my email and telephone number are posted on the website with the materials for this project.
But to answer your question, Rick, is that, I mean, it, it's really up to the business owners to find out, you know, if they want to do a New Prague program or a Scott County program.
program, or, you know, this sort of thing. And when La Sure's program comes out, counties also, so, I mean, go ahead, Mike. I will likely put information on the Scott County program on our EDA website for our local businesses as well. And if and when something comes from La Sure County, I would put that on there as well. That the two that have gone on and are done at this point is that the Scott County CDA, if you recall, they did a small program with their own monies, not, not any CARES Act fund monies, but $100,000 of their own money. And then in addition, as you recall, also running at that same time, early, I think, six, eight weeks ago, is the state of Minnesota through DED, with some of the state funding, was also doing the same thing for small businesses. So everywhere you turn, somebody seemingly has been trying to take some of these CARES Act funds and do it from all the various governmental entities. On the La Sure County side of things, most of the cities down there were small, didn't have enough staff, and so that's why it appears that the county is stepping in to likely to, to do it on all of, all of La Sure County, but for the benefit of some of the businesses in those areas as well.
Thank you.
Good. It'll be interesting to see how many people we get signed up.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding that for Mike?
I don't have a question for Mike, but on the eligible businesses for the City of New Prague, how was the discussion met with the eligible business must demonstrate a significant loss in revenue? What does significant mean? Was there any discussion around that? It's kind of nebulous when I read it, so.
What I recall is Lee, who is with Next, what is it, Next Stage, he kind of looks at, obviously, tries to look at a financial statement, if they have it, or a checkbook or a bank balance statement or stuff. Because of small businesses, a lot of them don't have a P and L per se-
Right.
-for each month. So we're kind of using his expertise to kind of look at that. And I think that's kind of the drift I got. I don't know, Bruce, if you have any other comments on that?
I think that's right. It's going to be difficult to kind of compare. They have to come up with previous years. They have to make the case that they suffered a loss. And it might be easier for some people to demonstrate that and document it. Others might have to go to the previous year, make comparisons over a time period. But I think the discussion was to err on the side of allowing them to be eligible, so to be generous about that.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was the contention, you know, the, the group felt that, you know, we want to get that money used and make sure that our businesses can survive this, so. After the first round, Maggie, which is determining generally whether they met the eligibility requirements, then a letter will be sent to them on what documentation and information they are going to have to submit, and that's kind of on page three, that they'll have five business days to submit that information to help substantiate that they have a loss, and what is it they're submitting that attempts to prove up that loss for basically April, May, June, and July.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't have any questions really about the application process. I thought that all was very reasonable. It was just a question of, you know, makes the determination of a significant loss. But as long as I hear the words that we want to be generous, you know, and ensure that businesses stay up and running, I'm fine.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this topic? If not, we go to number five, Jim. COVID update.
I don't have a lot for an update. Things really haven't changed with the executive orders. They did extend it another 30 days last week, but the governor hasn't really been messing with the dials from his PDF. So the mask issue is a concern that we keep addressing, making sure we have a proper PPE for all of our employees, on our employees, at least prior to tomorrow's supervisor meeting anyways. We haven't seen a big increase in our employees or workforce at all. So that is going very well. We have ample staff. I know even, even the voting went well. I talked to Patty about that, and she said, yeah, the numbers weren't real high, and she was expecting to kind of use this as a gauge for the primary election. And she said, I think, I think we might lay it out a little different, but overall, for the, for the COVID issue anyways, they were able to handle everything. Unless another supervisor has something to add, that's really all I have right now. Or any questions from the council?
I know at the last meeting, I brought up about the Gulf Board was interested in meeting face-to-face, and that was something that you guys were going to discuss. I know Ken was going to look into if it's possible to have it a Zoom where people from outside can zoom in and even though we're there type of thing. Is that something doable, or are we going to tell the Gulf Board that we have to do a go-to office meeting again for their August meeting?
I would stick for August, I would stick with what you've been doing. We did have a meeting, I think it was Wednesday following our last council meeting. We had our computer IT company, CTS, along with, and the name is escaping me of the company. They've helped the city of, I believe, La Sure and a few others in the area, setting up new systems here, or in the process of it. And there's some significant equipment needs to appropriately provide for that interaction and the in-person attendance to be done. And it is capable to be done, but you're talking multiple cameras in the ceiling, TV or monitor placement throughout the room, and then a, basically a device that can be used for people that are calling in from outside and have that interaction with you, and then you can see them, sort of like we're doing now, but for those that are in attendance at the meeting. So I don't have a final quote yet. They're still putting that together. They had also visited a couple of our conference rooms at City Hall, PD Conference Room, and the one that we hold EDA meetings in. And then I think down in Utilities Meeting Room as well, just to get a better handle on what would be needed for those. And there could be smaller dollar solutions for smaller rooms, including golf as well, but we don't have the final outcome of that yet. So I think we're close to figuring out what will work best. But I think, you know, generally speaking, and I'm assuming you don't have huge crowds at Gulf Board, much like the Utility Commission meeting, so that seemed to be a little, a little lower of a financial commitment. But again, we can use our CARES bill or that type of project. But it could be as little as, Jim helped me here, a sort of conference camera type situation in those cases versus council is much more involved.
Okay, that's fine. As long as, you know, that, I'll let the Gulf, I'll let the Gulf Board know that the August meeting, we still need to do electronically, and that, you know, we are still looking at some options. Again, even if we decide one room at City Hall could be set up and used rather than have, you know, we don't need to have a separate room at the golf course. If we want to do it in phase, we can, you know, have the meeting at City Hall or whatever. So, okay, that was the only thing I had regarding that. So I will, I will let the Gulf Board know. Any other questions? Any other comments from any supervisors or Mike or Jim on the COVID?
No. I can make another comment on the primary election. So we had 342 people that came to vote in person. That was about, of the total that did cast ballot, that was about 56% that voted in person, about 43% voted absentee. Whether that'll carry over to the general, we don't know, but that's a significant increase in absentee ballots that were cast for New Prague, but still yet to be seen. I mean, overall turnout was about 12% for the city, so nowhere near the general typical numbers. So it'll be interesting. But like Jim said, I was not at the elections last week. I was out of town. But Patty said it was a good learning experience for bringing out how to, you know, better arrange a room for, for more people that we're expecting. But it would be nice if it was, numbers were down, because there could be significant wait time for people that come to vote in person and not dissuading anybody from doing that. But if people can fill out the absentee ballot application online and do it that way, that, that might save them some time on Election Day.
Ken, for the council's benefit, do we know when those will be available?
People can turn in the absentee ballot applications at any point. Things go right on the website. We have a link on our website. We've been posting on social media. So anytime people are ready to do that, they can do that.
Okay. Good to know. Anything else on that? Okay, appreciate the update. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on any of the minutes or any of the APs? There look like those are going to be two items that are in the consent agenda? If there's no questions or comments, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent-
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. So without any questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie? I saw your lips moving, Maggie, so I was just gonna... Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the consent agenda passes 5-0. We're up to the fun part, miscellaneous. Patrick, we're going to start off with you. You got anything?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming again. Ken?
Nothing more.
All right. James?
Nothing more.
Okay, Michael? Really just one, just to acknowledge that I think you have a special event occurring tomorrow, do you not? If you mean getting a year older, yes, I do. Happy birthday. Getting closer to that retirement age.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Okay. Chris? Nothing? Glenn?
Well, happy birthday. And just a quick update on the BioSolids tank. All the piping and pumps and programming has been done and tested last week. The requirement to test all that equipment had to have six feet of liquid in there. So at this point, we're filling it up the rest of the way to start operation with it, and hopefully won't find any, although you got to assume we might find a little gork here or there. But at this point, everything's done. They got to finish seeding around the area. They did a really good job of not ripping it up too bad, so it won't take too much time as far as getting growth, grass seed to grow again and things like that. So that's, that's like very close to being done. So-
Awesome.
...update on that.
So we're still sending sludge to Montgomery?
Yep, tomorrow will be the last day.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Barb, I know we can't see you, but do you have anything?
I do not, and happy birthday, Mayor.
Well, thank you, and thanks again for doing that proclamation for me.
You're welcome.
Okay. Maggie?
No, I don't have anything, but I hope you enjoy your birthday tomorrow.
Sounds good. Sean?
No, but I'll give you a happy birthday too, and I'll apologize to Chris on that. I see that he did, he signed that form on 7/15, so I apologize. I just didn't see the handwriting part of it on the back of it. So I just see the frustration that I get from the general public on the whole thing that seems to be directed at us, you know? And it just, I just want to make sure things are moving along right. So I apologize. Sorry about that.
Okay, anything else?
That was it.
Okay, Rick?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Bruce?
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
I have nothing. I wish I would have baked you a cake, but I didn't. Happy birthday anyway.
Well, I appreciate it. It's always good getting older, because I don't like the other option.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. So with that in mind, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. This is Maggie.
Second by Maggie. I think we can do this by just a voice thing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we're out of here, everyone. Thank you for your time, and enjoy the lovely week.
Have a good evening.
So good night.